Good evening, everybody. This is advertised time in place for the Thursday, May 1, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Please join the board in standing for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions, flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Okay, thank you all for being here. We have no public hearings tonight, but we do have five discussion items. Item number one is River Point Apartments, and that's what Matt Charter is. Matt, let us know what's going on, please.
Matt Charter, Senior Planner, record. This is a site plan amendment for Better Knows, the apartment building. It's 821 River Point on East Main Street. If you remember back in 2023, by Resolution 2023-93, this board did grant administrative approval for some facade changes, really nice cleanup of the whole site, additional plantings, some gardens on site. So it's looking pretty good. It's come a long way. I know the, you know, the properties had some issues over the years, but they're really improving for the right reasons, I think. So we did do an inspection in January, and during this inspection, we noticed, you know, the elevations are slightly different than what's approved. So if you see on the plan here, all the interior entrances have this overhang that are bracketed. These two are what you see from the road. From what we've got from the applicant, I guess doing all these brackets, which are nonstructural, were cost prohibitive, so they've built them out with no brackets. So they're seeking to modify that as built condition. I'd like to see the department put a lot of work into making sure this looks good. So I kind of, I would prefer the brackets, but it's really at this board's discretion.
Brackets, the brackets were there so that rain, inclement weather.
Yeah, so the overhang is still there. It just doesn't have the bracket that's on the 45. So I guess, so what the applicant said is they were concerned about the integrity of the bricks that are underneath the siding. They didn't want to damage that, I guess. I don't know if anyone is here. You guys here? Come on up. And introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Eric Sambell, Principal of Grandoff Architects.
Hey, good afternoon. Sam Chover from Related Companies. You're the owner of the building.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go for it.
I think, I think the, so there's, there's a series of vertical brick applique to, to the front of the buildings. And the, you know, as, as some of the, you know, work was being done, we reinforced some of that brick. And as we explored, you know, really attaching through the brick, it, it, it really began to undermine what was there. So we found through with our structural engineer if we could put our, I think the details on the, the middle of the drawing, ledgers, you know, across the, the back of the roof, the new roof that we were adding on, that that was creating less problems for the brick, and we could keep the brick that, that was there. And one of the particular buildings, I forget which one off the top of my head, the, we did have to take all the brick down because of the movement that, that was there because of just the, the way the brick had pulled away from the building under previous, just, just wear. So this was, this was a way to, you know, kind of keep the existing brick there. It also was something that was perceived as a positive relative to the wayfinding in the signage. As, as we, you know, been out there during construction, the, the brackets where intended were blocking vision towards the numbering of, of the buildings. So I think that was sort of a, something we considered as an added plus, you know, that it was helping with just finding, someone's ability to find the way around the complex.
So the ones on Main Street are completed?
The ones on Main Street are as designed with columns, bluestone, little piers, you know, out there and really create what we think is a beautiful face compared to what was there previously.
You've done a great job compared to years ago.
Thank you. We, we were just out there for a playground construction as volunteering with the Related Affordable Foundation. And Matt Grant, who's been before you on this project, and I were just, you know, loving how, how, how improved it is relative to the beige and, you know, the funny postmodern, you know, canopies that were there previously, so.
Are the brackets necessary for support of the overhang?
They're not.
Strictly decorative?
Yes.
Is there anything else that you can do decorative that doesn't interfere with the, with the brick?
Like a corbeau or something in the corner?
There, there could potentially be an applied piece, but it was, it was looking, when, when we studied it, it just kind of looked like it wasn't the right size for, for most of those.
Could you get back to Matt and come up with maybe an idea that we could look at?
Yeah, that's up to you. You guys, if you want to see an alternative to what's there.
I would also quickly add that, you know, on sort of one side of the door, we've added an exterior light, which I don't know if you can tell from the revision. You can kind of see the signage on one side, but on the other side, we've added a light that's above a keypad. So it's, you know, in addition to the wayfinding, which was a request from the PD, you know, hey, we have trouble identifying your buildings when we respond to calls on your property, we've added a lot of that both at the door and on the side of the building. But now on the other side, we have an exterior light, which was not there before. So we haven't just gone away with this bracket and not utilized the space. We've actually, there is something framing each doorway, which I think looks, looks quite nice.
I, I would, I would, I agree with that completely. And I think, I think it's just an extra piece that, that's, that's not necessary architecturally. And, you know, the, you know, with, with the mission of, of the particular development, you know, that I would, you know, I know, I know it's not really my position to talk about budgets, but you know, just if, if it was at all possible, as we try to put that, you know, client's money and where that money that's coming from into things that build the community, I don't think that that's what these, these brackets would, or corbals necessarily achieve.
All right, well, hang around. We're gonna have a vote in a little while.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or anything, gentlemen? No. Okay, thank you. Right now, we're going to go to executive session with our legal department to discuss Zuma Central Square. If I can get a motion from the board.
Motion.
Motion seconded.
Second.
Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Justin. This board supports farmers. This board supports farming. We always have, we always will. But we don't believe we have a legal mechanism to fix this. I'm gonna ask the town attorney to draft a memo to the town board with our findings and move on to item number three. Qdoba Drive-Thru Restaurant Conversion. With Heather.
So as the board is aware, sorry, before I start, just introduce yourselves to the record. Yes?
Jaclyn Pronto, Key Civil Engineering. I'm the site engineer for the tenant.
And Zane Sallis, the landlord.
Okay, so as the board is aware, we had received, reviewed, had a public hearing on and approved a site plan application to repurpose the existing Friendly's building into a drive-thru. Half would be used for the Qdoba drive-thru, the other half would be an unspecified restaurant tenant. One of the conditions of approval prior to signature of the plans was to submit a future cross-access easement for the abutting property to the south, as described herein. That was condition number 5B on page five of the approval resolution. The property owner does not want to sign any future cross-access agreement with the property to the south. And upon looking through the title report, which I referred to our council, it was actually discovered that the property, the western and southern property boundaries are already encumbered with a cross-access easement that was filed in 2006. And Jackie, can you point out under?
Sure. So I, there's a Schedule A. So this is what the board received, a copy of the declaration of cross-easement.
So this was the, the title report, and I, I circulated it this afternoon. I don't know if everyone got a chance to look at it.
I have some copies. So the way this document reads, it, it says that the cross-access easement is described by Schedule A. Schedule A, sorry if I don't have enough for everybody. Schedule A is, is defined by these meets and bounds, and so we had asked the surveyor to plot it. And it's shown this gray hatched area. So there's a line that runs parallel to the east property line that continues all the way to the southern property line, varies in width from back here to up here. So the way I'm understanding this document is that cross-access can occur anywhere along the eastern boundary to the part to the adjacent parcel which L's around us, has frontage or has a connection to our piece both on the east and southern portion. Currently, this is a, there's an auto repair place here and currently, and I'm just gonna switch to a aerial that might put it in a little better perspective for you. So currently you come, this is with our proposed on top, so you're, you're coming in and you immediately would make a left to get into the, it's not an auto, it's like a tire place, get into the tire place. And then there's, you know, this piece continues, this is August Grober's parcel that's behind us. So in previous discussions with the board and with the planners, the discussion was to put the cross-access back here. There's a little bit of a concern, not knowing how this parcel is going to be developed, that this might become a bit of a thoroughfare, create a traffic congestion for our development. And again, it's, it's an unknown problem at this time. My hope is that when the adjacent property owner comes in with an application, we'll be notified, we'll see their development and understand how, whether cross-access should be on back here, up here. And in light of it existing, we're not, we don't feel that another document should be signed. And I think the owner wants to make sure there is only one point of connection, that there's not multiple curb cuts from his property to the adjacent property.
Just to clarify, this describes not only the western boundary, but also the southerly part of both August Grober land and Longwood land. That was the prior owner.
It's an extremely poorly written agreement, to be honest with you. I've read it several times. I shared it with his zoning attorney. I mean, there's even spelling and typos and right-of-way and, but it's, it's, so I followed the description as the best way to do it. And there's actually two. There's one on the east side, and there's another description. It makes no sense, frankly. Seems to be describing, it seems to be describing this area here that's also hatched on the survey, so, which, which has no connection, it's just on its own parcel. So, but yeah, if you want, I'll put that one up on the screen to show.
Wasn't there an?
Yeah, so Exhibit A.
Wasn't there an application?
So this is the Exhibit A that's referenced in the cross-access easement. And I think that Zane's interpretation of reviewing this, if you see right above the word mutual access easement, you see these arrows going left and right, right into the curb cut into the tire place. And I think his understanding and intention was.
There are also arrows that go to the south and then cross-access here.
So I think the intent when they did this easement, it was to make sure that any development on any of the properties would be done so in the safest and cleanest manner. You know, obviously, we don't know what the other property owner is going to do, but at such time, a site plan application is made. This board, in conjunction with, you know, any agencies that we refer the application to, other departments, our consulting engineer, on top of having a required public hearing for new development, will consider the safest and best place for any sort of future cross-access. Nothing is getting built out as part of this, but I, I want to acknowledge that it exists. And according to the verbiage in this document, it exists on the west and the south.
Can I speak? Certainly. It's my understanding that one egress exists that actually crosses through to the neighbor's property. Currently, it's the one right here off of Old Country Road.
Yeah, that's been improved since before.
Correct. So there would not be a request for a second egress in the back. They would be closing that?
I'm not sure.
Because that parcel currently manages the traffic for itself. It also manages the property for the property to the east. And in the event it gets developed back here, it'll be managing the property for, the traffic for that as well. And I don't think that's in the best interest of the community, of any of the tenants or anybody that is too much.
I don't think this board would approve anything that would inadvertently harm or cause any sort of issue with public safety to any of the adjacent property owners in the event that development were to come in in the future. That's not, you know, this board, its best interests are in planning and making sure that site circulation, you know, makes sense, again, is, is safe. It would get referred to DPW. For all we know, DPW might say, abandon that existing cross-access, here's your curb cut on 58. But from a fire access standpoint, you know, we would want some sort of cross-access in the future. Again, we don't know what's going to be developed, if it's going to be the same owner developing. We don't know if you're gonna own the property in the future. It's just, it's poor planning to omit a condition when you don't have to do anything new, it exists. So.
It seems like this board tries to make more easements to move traffic more, you know, smoothly and everything else. And all, all this is, is just giving an easement a right-of-way to go west, go east, whatever. And actually, it keeps it more away from your parking area.
Well, as it is right now, should they create another egress into the rear going up to the south?
But it could be, it could be here. It could be here. I believe there's a curb here, so I mean.
Anywhere on the south.
You know how DPW sort of guided the development and the traffic circulation on this project? DPW might come in and say the same thing. Anyone who's looking to go points west from this parcel is gonna have to utilize an existing cross-access here or here and go to the traffic circle.
Could they not come through the existing cross, the easement and just go to the back? Couldn't they just come through the easement that currently exists?
That's right, that's going to be right-out only. You were complaining about people making lefts here.
Right, that's the thing.
So they're not.
Well, I'm complaining about having to manage all of the traffic that pertains to this parcel on this property, plus its own's traffic, plus its traffic, all on one property. That's what I'm complaining about.
Yes, but that's, that's what the town is trying to do, to make everything smoother, whether it's your property or your neighbor's property. That's what we're trying to do. It's not to harm anybody, it's to keep traffic moving, whether it's to a light, to the traffic circle, or just going, going east.
No, that I understand. I'm talking about creating additional traffic that does not belong here now. In other words.
The number of.
I'm referring.
Potentially can be generated from a future development.
Correct. Future traffic that would be developed as a result of developing this rear parcel. The traffic does now, it does not exist. Once this gets developed, now we're talking about new traffic. That's the traffic.
Which is going to be subject to secret review and planning board approval, at which time you'll be afforded the opportunity to speak at a public hearing and you'll be, you're an adjacent property owner, you would be notified of any public hearings. We also posted out planning board agendas on the website a week prior to the meeting, which is the first and third of every month. You're always welcome to look. You can call us to see if the subject property owner of, of this parcel has submitted anything. You know, the planning board, I just, I don't want to omit a condition. Again, you don't have to file or sign anything new, but we're acknowledging that the cross-access exists. And if in the future, maybe, maybe they decide to demolish the Friendly's building and you want to build something new there, maybe all of these parcels get merged. We don't know. But the planning board should be afforded the opportunity to decide in conjunction with a site plan review process, which is required by law, where the safest and most equitable spot for a cross-access should be. We're not making anything get built out at this point in time.
And as, and we discussed a little bit earlier today, that we're gonna modify the site layout to not actually show this curb cut right here and just show parking, with the understanding that when this application comes in, it'll be reviewed by the board to determine the best develop, the best spot based on what they are doing. And maybe it's in this location and the trash gets put over here because this is a continual easement that'll take you out to Roanoke. So it's sort of this, this hypothetical concern of a future development that we don't know what's gonna happen. And I think.
If ever.
If ever.
But that's every project.
Yeah. Yes, I, I understand. I think, and I just, one, just one little question. I wasn't sure if, when notices are sent, is it just to property owners or is it also to like tenants?
No, it's to the property owner.
Just the property owner.
So the mailing list is generated based on the property owner and their mailing address. But a sign has to be posted, so when they come in for a site plan, you know, the property would have to be posted on the frontage on 58, which is quite visible. So I would think that the tenants would be able to clearly see it. And obviously, if they fail to meet their posting and mailing requirements in an application that has yet to be made, they wouldn't be able to have a public hearing. So I'm just, the point is, is that instead of trying to modify a condition that's a requirement of town code, we're just acknowledging that, oh, this cross-access actually already exists. It was filed in 2006. So if you could, as we discussed on the phone earlier, sort of in detail, load that up on the site plan and just reference the libra and page number, I think that would sort of solve this issue, if that's what you wanna call it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think just as long as they have to have cross-access, where it, where.
Where it's most appropriate.
Where it's appropriate, right, right.
If we take no action, now that's what will stand.
Correct. And then they can move forward and, you know, get their plan signed and hopefully.
We're gonna help you out. You know, we want to help you be successful there.
And then again, in, in the future, if the southern property is developed, they'll undergo the full site plan process. And at that time, wherever the most appropriate point for cross-access is, it will get built out because the easement exists.
I just want to confirm that it will not be a second easement onto my property. It'll be moved to a relocated.
You wanna say curb cut. You know, there will only be one point of connection between the two, whether it's here, 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 here.
I don't know. I can't tell you that. If DPW were to make the finding that that northern curb cut is no longer viable and they can have a direct curb cut onto 58, we, we would still require another cross-access, but our code doesn't speak to a single cross-access. It actually says cross-access easements, plural. So I understand that it's the same property, but it's in, it's in L shape. And if having two accesses is going to be the safest for all of the properties, that's the action the planning board will take. If it's not, and only one consolidated access is needed, then that's the action we'll take. But we, we can't make decisions on future applications that don't exist, and it's holding up this project, which is unfortunate for the tenant.
Are you able to share a little history of this? Because I'm understanding from seeing that there was an application for Compare Foods here that.
So there were multiple applications made. There was one to expand the auto shop, which actually did get preliminary approval. I think the zoning board relief expired. He had come in with a potential Compare Foods, and I couldn't find any sort of approval resolutions on file. So, you know.
Do you recall what happened with the Compare?
I, I recall not approving the curb, the, the egress, and then the deal fell apart. That's what I recall, that I had the, the option to agree to it or not. Because, and the way I see it, whatever traffic comes through onto my parcel, I'm burdened with managing not only my tenant's traffic and everybody else's, but the asphalt, the wear and tear, it all falls on. So I said, I, I don't, I don't need to accommodate somebody else's property. They already have access to the, they can accommodate themselves.
So do you own all the property, all the way to Roanoke Avenue?
He owns Friendly's, he owns the KFC property, was it the Jiffy Lube?
It's currently.
But my point is, everybody uses that second means of egress to go out to Roanoke.
Yeah, they're all coming through, they're coming through Roanoke.
But that's my point.
All connected.
He, he owns all of these, four.
And, but that easement that goes across the properties has been in place.
That easement is for my tenants to go back and forth. That easement was created so that my tenants, they each have a curb cut, can also have a cross-easement for each other to service themselves with all the traffic they have.
Right.
It wasn't for neighbors or other properties.
Everyone's restricted with a right-out onto Old Country, so it's a, it's an opportunity to be able to make a left.
But arguably, in the larger span of planning, especially along 58, interconnectivity is important because it acts as a safety tool. You know, you want to direct everyone to this access because then they can utilize the traffic.
No, I, I agree with everything you're saying, except for the fact that this property's traffic pattern problem is not my problem.
But we don't know what the traffic pattern is going to be or if it's going to be a problem.
At any point inside would never be my problem. My neighbor's pool should never be my problem. My pool is my problem. My neighbor's problem is never my problem, especially when my neighbor already has access to his property. The reason why he doesn't want to go this way, he doesn't want to disturb his current tenant, so will disturb my tenant.
But we don't, we don't, we'll get knocked down. You know, if he comes in for a site plan, we don't know what it's gonna be, we don't know what the site configuration is gonna be. And.
My, my point is this, as the landlord who pays taxes on all of these, who maintains them properly, who I believe in fairing the community, should not be burdened by anybody else's needs.
I don't think the planning board would place a burden on anyone.
Okay. Thank you. By creating a second egress through my property would be a burden to me, though. Just, I mean, it's common sense, all that traffic.
But it already exists, right?
One exists.
No, the easement, the easement exists.
There's one right here for him.
It was my understanding in the read of that cross-access easement, I assumed that it, it was a little challenging, it was a bit of a challenging read there, but that was my understanding, it's the, it's, it's the swath of land across, that goes from Old Country Road all the way to the back.
Is it eastern and southern?
But are you aware that an easement also exists on the KFC property?
So this is, this is the thing.
No, there is, there is no, there is no, that was not recorded. That was not a recorded easement. That does not exist. Doesn't show up anywhere. The curb cut was put in by somebody, but it was, there was no recorded easement there. There's a curb cut that doesn't belong there with no easement.
The western.
Which is another thing that bothers me about. Correct. There is a curb cut here, there is no recorded easement. It's just a picture of it.
It was a survey, so.
Yes, it does not, does not exist.
It just, it seems like maybe a conversation needs to be had with the adjacent property owner in the future when he comes in for development. I don't know if managing any issues that you have with him is under the purview of this board.
No, there's no issues. It's just that I don't want to take on the burden of traffic for another property owner.
And I think that argument will be, you know, for a future time and place when there's development here.
So it's not happening at this moment? We're not acknowledging it?
Nothing, nothing is getting built out as a part of this site plan. We're just, you know, part of, one of the conditions of the approval was to file a future cross-access, because we weren't aware that this easement existed. Because we weren't aware that this easement existed.
Okay.
The easement from 2006 exists and
That's correct. And I mean, it, while it may not be written how we would write them now, it clearly says between the adjoining land southerly to the rear property owned by August Grober, then westerly along the southerly part of both August Grober land and Longwood lands as shown on Exhibit A, which is attached. It's that sketch that we've shown and that was attached and recorded in the clerk's office on uh, August 15th, 2006.
Correct. And I acknowledge that.
Alright, so that's, we're just asking that the site plan, you know, be reflected to show that the cross access exists by that liburn page number. You won't file anything new. Nothing is getting built out as a part of that acknowledgement, but it'll allow your tenant to move forward with the development instead of stalling a project that's gonna make the site look better.
You don't need anything from me to continue this.
No, you asked for this discussion, though.
No, I wanted to clarify, and I'm glad that I did, uh, that there's one easement at the frontier that there's not gonna be.
There's one current access and one existing easement.
There could be a second one on the southern property line.
But we don't know.
We don't know.
We're just telling you
There may currently be an existing one, you're saying?
No, there is.
There is an existing one. It's in the recorded document that it's the eastern property line and the southern property. In the future, this board may hopefully require that the southern property line, like that one, be opened. We don't know that yet.
Does a curb cut exist behind the KFC into that, the wooded lot itself?
Somebody built it there, but it does not, it's not recorded.
Well, would that suffice as being a curb, uh, would that suffice?
He, he owns all those properties and he doesn't want to allow
Doesn't want any access back there.
But what, what, the point that we're making
I mean, the curb cut's already there.
I know.
Behind KFC. So would that settle, solve the problem?
Yeah, but I, I mean, I could cut a curb cut right now. It's not, it's not a recorded cut. It's not a, there wasn't no permits pulled for it. There's, it's not a recorded. It's not, doesn't show up in the building department, that curb cut.
That's not relevant because that property isn't in question. It's just the Friendly's parcel and August Grober's parcel. And what we're saying is there is already a recorded easement with a liburn page number that describes with, with the exhibit and also in writing where the easements exist. There's only one currently improved curb cut now. And by acknowledging that the easement exists, instead of making him file an additional easement, which he doesn't want to do, which is, it's duplicative if we were to try to do that because one exists already. And in the future, when the planning board reviews any sort of application for the other develop, for the other property shouldn't, should it come in, you know, it's gonna be conducive to all of the developments around. And if it's not needed, it's not needed. But the easement, which is essentially at this point, an imaginary line
Correct.
Still exists. But we're not opening any additional curb cuts at this time.
The, sorry, I just, I just, I had done this for myself. Um, the, the two highlighted areas are what is described, that description um, in the document, Schedule A. So if you follow
Jackie, there's Exhibit A and Schedule A. So the cross access is Exhibit A. Schedule A is a sewer.
It says easement area. You're reading it as a sewer?
I, I'm not hearing that at all, sorry.
Matt, if you're gonna speak, you have to come up to the table. Thanks.
So, so, you know, I, we had provided the title report to the surveyor and asked them to update the survey to be a title survey. So their interpretation of it is, is what we're showing.
What's interesting, and I don't know who's in issue, but we have Page 1 of 4 here. That's declaration. Page 2 of 4, part of the declaration where both owners had signed at the time. Page 3 of 4 is the notarized stamp. Not really sure this is easement area, but they're not included as page numbers. Page 4 of 4 is Exhibit A.
That's interesting.
So
Right.
I'm not entirely sure why they included this as an easement area when it is clearly describing, I think, the existing sewer easement. If you look back in the title
It does speak about sewer in here.
I wonder if you were to look back in the title report.
Together with in easement, where sewer mains and appurtenances described as follows.
Heather, does
It's very confusing.
Do they get site plan approval with the cross easement?
So the planning, are you talking about Qdoba?
Yes.
So Qdoba was given approval with the condition that a, a future cross access easement be filed prior to signature of the plans, not realizing that there was one existing. So the, the owner is contesting, he doesn't want to file anything new, but he doesn't have to. But this wasn't discovered until, you know, today. So
So there is a cross easement.
It exists. So all we have to do is acknowledge it on the plans, which will allow Ed to sign them as planning board chair.
Sir, you know, there is an easement.
I know the easement that I point to. You know, I know the easement that I know.
I think, I think
I know this easement here is the, the easement. That's the easement we're referring to, right?
That's the existing
That's the existing easement. I know that.
That's the existing improved area, but the easement itself that was filed in 2006 is larger than that.
So the way that the town attorney is reviewing this document is that the easement is along the entire eastern boundary and along the entire southern boundary of the Friendly's parcel. The current connection between your parcel and the neighbor's parcel is this curb cut right here.
Yes.
But the easement exists anywhere along here, which means that they have the rights to provide additional connections anywhere along here. And this document is recorded in perpetuity. So it's, it's forever that way.
Okay. I acknowledge what I, what I'm seeing here. Um, and I also know that in the future, should they want to do something, I'd be notified because obviously there's parking and various things, but currently I acknowledge there's one easement.
Any sort of development, just even like with this application, it was the reuse of an existing building. It underwent site plan review. It was subject to a public hearing. Arguably, new development would be, you know, it would have a more thorough review. Um, so you would most certainly be notified if you're still the property owner at that time. Are we, we good? So essentially, nothing is changing.
No action.
Just the site plan will be updated and it'll affect you being able to sign it. Alright?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Discussion item number four. Long Island Cauliflower Association Commercial Center for final site plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Greg, you're up.
Mister Israel, come up, go to the discussion. Messers.
How you doing, gentlemen?
Hey, how we doing?
So, as the board will recall at our last meeting, we had a, we granted another extension for the Long Island Cauliflower Association redevelopment site plan. Uh, Justin, if we could just zoom out a little bit to get the whole, that's good. Yep. Yep. Alright, so this is the site plan application to redevelop the property located on the northwest corner of 58 and Old Country Road, uh, 58 and Mill Road, rather. Uh, the initial application, when this came in, uh, the planning board, we granted a preliminary approval back in 2023. Uh, at that time, the site plan application proposed to redevelop the site with a Chick-fil-A restaurant with a drive-through. Uh, there was gonna be a potential Dunkin' Donuts. There was discussion of a second Jimmy John's restaurant, another unidentified fast food restaurant with a drive-through, and then a traditional sit-down restaurant. Uh, since that preliminary approval, the application has changed slightly. Uh, the Chick-fil-A is still proposed as the first building on the site closest to 58. The uh, building numbers 2, 3, and 4 are now shown as medical office. Um, I guess markets changed. The owner and the applicant decided to make a change. The site layout essentially remains the same. Uh, they're still proposing the two curb cuts on, the two driveways on Mill Road, which line up with the existing Home Depot shopping center. Uh, the curb cut on 58 will still be right in, right out. The layout is essentially the same, so there's no, you know
Everything conforms to
No substantive changes. Uh, so one of the things that we, I, I did, we do have a final approval resolution on. There's some big conditions in there. Uh, I did make a recitation to just reflect the secret record because again, we issued a negative declaration based on a development proposing four restaurants, three with drive-throughs. Uh, there is a recitation in there that the trip generation for a medical office is significantly less than a restaurant with a drive-through. So we analyzed and the mitigation that was proposed in the form of the uh, northbound addition of a left turn lane from Mill Road into the site, as well as the redoing of the signal and the timing up here on the Mill Road and Home Depot intersection. We've arguably, arguably mitigated the more intense use of the property. Uh, so there's no need to, you know, do additional review. Uh, we've essentially mitigated the more intense use of the secret analysis and the mitigation will remain in place. Uh, at some point down the road, if they decide to shift gears again and do another drive-through, do a drive-through restaurant, it's consistent with that analysis. Um, so we, the applicant has satisfied all the conditions. We've got through fire marshal, they got their SWIP. Do make, do need to make some final tweaks, which are called out in the resolution, but we are ready for a final approval for this.
Okay. Any questions, you're up?
Both water and sewage, right?
Water, sewer. Uh, sewer connection is going to be through an easement through a parcel that Mister Israel owns on Commerce Drive. Uh, water will be coming off 58. There were a lot of discussions that the applicant had with the water district. It's gonna be looped. It's gonna be coming off of 58, which they'll have to jack under the road. And there will also be a connection on Mill Road. Uh, my understanding is that that will serve in the event of a, a failure of one point of the water system, there'll be a redundant supply, so they won't have to, you know, shut down the property if there's a break on 58 or on Mill Road. Beyond that, pretty happy to get this guy, uh, get this guy over the finish line. It has changed several times.
Is this, is it all gonna be paved?
Excuse me?
Is all of the entrances and, and the area where
We, we've agreed to create the two entrances and uh, create the back road that you see there that leads to secondary entrance. While the balance of the projects, we, we don't know what's going to the north yet.
Well, I'm thinking of in the Chick-fil-A, there was, it looked like in the entrance where they, where they baked their orders, it looked like it, this is not gonna be paved. It's gonna be a bluestone or something.
No, I don't believe I think. All the, all the curb cuts, all the access, I mean, CPW wouldn't allow bluestone on their property. Curb cuts.
Good.
Right. So the curb cut on 58 will be completed, the curb cut on Mill Road by the light will be completed and, and whatever. And Greg has said that he wants us to put in that road that leads to the northern portion. Uh, there's a lot of drainage and everything else under that road, so it may have to be built and torn up and built and torn up and whatever.
Rich, there, there is a curb cut to the west of that property already. Are you gonna be using that one?
There's a curb cut to the west. Meaning the one on Commerce Drive?
No, no, the one right on, right on 58.
It's removed. And the new curb cut is hard up, almost hard up against the neighbor's property.
There is a curb cut there already.
So the, the phase, the phase one development is gonna consist of, they're gonna construct all, both of the driveways, the, you know, the service road, the service driveway coming down here, the curb cut on 58, the right in, right out, the redoing of the signal. This area and this area, you know, buildings 2 and 3, and building 4 will essentially be future phases. Um, but you know, so if someone's exiting Chick-fil-A and they're looking to go north on Mill Road, if they don't want to sit at the light, they can go out here and come out.
Alright, I'm looking, I'm looking at uh, the first, the first, oh no, number 15. Okay? And what I'm, what I'm just seeing in terms of the entrance to Chick-fil-A, that's where they put their, where their orders in, there's a different, it looks like a different type of pavement.
Concrete. The entrance to 58, meaning down here?
No, no, no. The entrance to, to where, for all the guys, yes, where they
Oh, they're concrete through their drive-through.
Okay. That's all.
So there's no, I guess
It just had a, it had a different type of, of stippling and I'm thinking, well, maybe it isn't. Okay.
That's one of their standards. Anything else, gentlemen?
Good.
We're gonna have a resolution on a little later.
Okay, I just have to tell you that I am gonna vote against it because I do not want the entrance on 58 into the property. Exit is fine, but the entrance, it's not gonna work. I've, I've driven back there many, many times and that is a, is a bottleneck to start with.
So the, the concept is, is that if a person misses the mill, is heading west and misses the Mill Road turnoff,
Yes.
there's no way for him to ever get back.
I understand that.
So it's really a right in, and the same thing with the exiting.
Well, the right out is fine. But it's just that, it's just congested to start with.
It's one of our problems on Route 58, that if you miss something, you have to make it almost all the way to Edwards Avenue to turn around. You have to go under the expressway and take that loop and come back.
Or you make a left turn. You make a left turn at the next light and come back.
Make a U-turn? Yeah.
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you, guys. Uh, moving on to number five, Sandy Pond Links. Trade shops, managers' residence. Hello, Kim.
Uh, so we've got a site plan application, which is seeking to construct a 3100 square foot clubhouse with covered porches as an accessory to an existing nine-hole executive golf course, as well as the 18-hole mini golf course. Uh, there's a 1,040 square foot managers' residence, as well as three 7,200 square foot trade shop buildings. Uh, subject property is located at 1521 Roanoke Avenue, Sandy Pond Links Golf Course. Uh, the town board for these proposed improvements granted a special permit. Uh, they adopted the resolution number 2025-189 dated February 19th, 2025. Uh, there were some conditions in that approval. Uh, they said the applicant must receive site plan approval from the planning board, uh, that the managers' residence shall be occupied by employees of the golf course and shall not be rented, uh, that the uses of the proposed trade shop building shall be limited to building and construction, general and special trade contractors, which there's a standard industrial classification code that we've used to identify that. So it'll essentially be, you know, if there's a contractor, a landscaper, plumber, you know, et cetera, who can, you know, needs trades, you know, needs storage space, they can utilize that for such. Um, and that there's also the, they have to relocate an existing drainage easement. Uh, right now, there's an existing drainage easement that travels from Roanoke Avenue to the pond that takes water from basically the northern tributary area on Roanoke Avenue, bundles it to that on-site water feature. As a result of the building number two, they're going to relocate that easement. So the property is zone residence B40. Surrounding area across the street is predominantly residential and agricultural in character, uh, with the exception of the pre-existing non-conforming C and D processing facility just located to the north. All in all, very good site plan. There was just a couple of issues I noted. Uh, so the clubhouse, that's shown on the site plan. Uh, the floor plans and the elevations indicate that there will be basement access on the south side of the building. Uh, there's a roll-up door as well as a man door. Uh, the basement will be unfinished. It'll be for storage and mechanicals. Uh, I just noted that on the site plan, there doesn't really appear to be any access shown to that building. Uh, the location of the sanitary system may conflict with any potential ramps. Again, I don't think that's a decent amountable item to address, just need to be clarified. Uh, we also just need an updated cut and fill calculation. If there is to be a full basement, they will be obviously excavating and exporting most of that material. Uh, all of the exterior lighting proposed on the site applies with the article XLIX of the town code. They are proposing nine pole-mounted aerial lights around the trade shop buildings and 12 wall-mounted lights. Again, they're all mounted at a height that meets the 16-foot mounting height, and they're all 3,000 degree Kelvin. Uh, one note about the fencing and screening, so the trade shop building area does show a six-foot black vinyl chain link fence with privacy slats. Uh, I just noted that on the landscaping sheet, the landscaping sheet shows that a row of Arborvi Emblegreen and Rowch Canadian Arborvitae will be planted on the inside of that fence line. I would just recommend that that row of landscaping be planted on the outside of the fence line. I think it would be more visually appealing to be looking at a row of trees than it would be to look at a black chain link fence. Again, they've got foundation plantings around both, all the buildings, the trade shops, uh, the clubhouse, all along the perimeter, so it'll be nice and landscaped. Uh, we did get comments from the fire marshal We did get comments from the Fire Marshal and the Water District on this application as well as the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission considered it to be a matter for local determination and they offered some comments. The premises should be encumbered by appropriate operating restrictions to adequately protect nearby residences, i.e. shielded lighting, hours of operation, truck deliveries, garbage pickup, truck idling, outdoor speaker systems, building alarms, trash compactors, et cetera. Number two was consideration should be given to requiring the construction of a landscaped earth berm along Roanoke Avenue. Landscaping should be done with indigenous plant materials to blend the earthworks into the landscape and reduce maintenance while to help preserve and protect residential amenities by reducing sound levels and visual intrusion. And that all stormwater runoff resulting from this development should be retained onsite by adequate drainage improvement, so that will not flow out onto the right of way of Roanoke Avenue. We've got comments also from the Health Department. The Architectural Review Board reviewed the application at its meeting on April 23rd. The application was received favorably by the ARB. They did make some recommendations to the applicant to make revisions to the trade contracted buildings, so they'll make those changes and come back to an ARB, future ARB meeting for further review. Beyond that, the board has any questions? I do have a resolution.
Before we start, can we just get your names for the...
Sorry. Brian Stark, applicant.
Kimberly Judd.
Thank you. The clubhouse was beautiful, you did a beautiful rendering on that. My concern here is the trade shops. It almost looks to me that if we took the trade shops and went as far south as possible, got rid of the proposed stone blend parking and had the entrance, same entrance as the dwelling, and then fenced off so that, I know you have a gate there, but the idea of the commercial aspect of it, the trade shops and kids running to golf and all that, I'm just curious, it would, would make more sense to make the entrance and exit on the far south corner and move the trade shops down and make it a completely separate, almost like a separate lot?
Well, we're going to have, we're going to have a gate across the, when you pull it off, because the town wanted us to just do one curb cut, so that's why we didn't do two. So when you drive in to the golf, the one entrance we have, you can make that immediate left and there'll be a gate there, which I envision that the guys who are using the buildings will have like a key fob and it'll be gated, so the whole, that whole side of the property will be secure and self-contained.
What's the purpose of the proposed stone blend? How come, it just seems like it's almost two sections, one trade shop and then two trade shops. She was, it says stone blend.
Oh, they all write...
Oh, on the, on the back?
Between the three buildings, you said?
Yeah, this, this area. So I mean, I guess the, the exist, is the entire area for the trade shops going to be stone blend or just in this area?
That, well, I would envision if you're going to put strike parking in there, we're going to have to do all, as all. The blend over there, I'd have to ask Doug Adams why he proposed that.
Yeah.
But everything else, as far as I'm concerned, is going to be paved, because we have to, because we have...
Yeah, it shows paved except for that one lot that says proposed stone blend. And I'm just curious why the trade shops, I mean, like together?
I can't imagine.
I'll, I'll look in like... Yeah, okay. What else? What's the story with the pipe that goes from Roanoke County to... Is that issue been...
So we're picking up all the stormwater runoff for years. It's always been an issue. So that pipe, we replaced that pipe when we did the first phase, I think Greg, when we were, it broke, so we replaced it because it was causing a problem, because it was, it deteriorated.
Is there still joint on your property?
So we, we made the pipe, that pipe that's there now works and it comes into that pond.
Yeah.
And it's, yeah, oh yeah, it picks up water.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, so that, that easement, that drainage easement, I picked up on that when I reviewed the first application for the mini golf course. That easement, well, at the time, our GIS layer just showed a drainage pipe. The title report didn't identify any easement, so, look, things get done back in the day, it was probably done, you know, like a handshake deal, you know, they just agreed to take the pipe. That easement was formal, you know, if, if there's water, if there's an existing drainage system that's taking water, there should be some recording of that. So that easement was recorded back when we did the mini golf course. Now they're just relocating that easement. But I mean, it'll still function, you know, they're just, they're not eliminating it, they're just changing the path.
So it doesn't go under the building, yes?
Just the path, just changing the path the water takes, but yeah, that was actually formally recorded.
It's better than it was.
Yeah.
Brian, this will be on the backside of the building?
Yeah, all the, all the intense loading and stress will be on the west side, residential side will be screened and we'll have a more of a softer look. There'll be no garage doors.
Is there a, is there a time limit when that closes?
Well, if you're paying rent, I would imagine that guys will be using it if they work late, but generally it'll be guys who are trade people who are in and out with a key fob and it'll all be gated and secured. So I, I don't think we can cut the key fob off if they're paying rent.
Well, only because, do you have a time limit on the miniature golf?
Oh, we do on that, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah. But I don't, I don't think I could ask potential tenants to not use it at midnight, right? I mean, unless, unless they're breaking code, unless they're making noise.
During the 24-hour service business, they're going to get...
Right, plumbers are in there, but they still can't go violate a town code and make noise, right?
I mean, I would just so, you know, for the, for the purposes of the site plan, I mean, we, we're not talking, you know, this, these are parking stalls, this is not going to be like outdoor storage yard where there's going to be outdoor storage of materials. I mean, if, if, if there's a plumber in there and he gets an emergency call, he goes to his shop, you know, gets his truck, loads up his materials and leaves, you know, this is not something where one would expect a tremendous amount of outside activity.
Correct.
You know, Brian's kept the property, cleaned it up very nice. Can't imagine that he'd want it to turn into a, to a, you know...
That's the type of work you're anticipating, like plumbers and electricians and things like that?
Yeah, the cement block buildings had, well, they had a welder in there, they had George Woodall landscaping in there, they had Jimmy Bloss seal coating, and then they had a garage door opener. I mean, I have a pool company that's interested from the south side, he's actually one of the minor partners, so they're just service trucks coming in and out with pool.
All right. Just see if you can check on what's going on with that gravel thing, I'm just curious...
I'll ask Doug, yeah. I saw that, I never really asked him about it.
I have a, I have a drawing here of the proposed clubhouse foundation. What building is this under? Is it, will it be under both buildings?
The clubhouse is a standalone building.
The clubhouse, yeah, the clubhouse, my knowledge, clubhouse is the only building with a basement. These guys, the trade shops are going to be off.
So this, this actually is the clubhouse basement?
Yes, that's the clubhouse.
That's clubhouse basement?
Yeah, but the storage buildings won't have...
Yeah, and I, I'm trying to confuse myself, but... How, how, are you going to, are you going to build all three storage buildings or are you going to space them in or what?
I envision trying to build the clubhouse first because I just want to be done with that side of the property and then deal with the, the storage buildings in the last phase.
Okay.
Just because I don't want to be jumping around.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Makes sense.
So just to the, I mean, I can, I can look...
I have one more question. On page five of your report, all the way on the bottom, it says something about a subdivision.
That was honestly a comment right, right out of the Health Department. I, I copy and paste the Health Department comment, so they probably meant site plan, but they meant, they said subdivision in their memo. So it is a site plan.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the property and saying, are they going to subdivide between the two, two trade buildings or something like that?
There's no, there's no, there's no subdivision, that was probably just a copy paste error on the Health Department.
It was subdivision between Terry and...
Yes, from that.
From nine years ago. That's one of the first things I did. Just to circle back to one of the board's comments, I don't think the, either of the Town Board's special permits were explicit in the one curb cut. I mean, there is a pretty healthy separation. If, if the, if the board would like to see a separate curb cut, if there is any kind of concern here about, you know, conflicting traffic with the mini golf course and the parking for here, I mean, it probably wouldn't be the end of the world if there was an additional curb cut down here. I mean, there is a...
By the driveway?
Yeah, like to, to kind of separate the trade shop. I mean, there is almost a...
Is there enough turning radius down there with like, there's, it's, it's wide enough, you think?
Um, I mean, yeah, this is, I mean, this is a 24-foot wide curb cut. I mean, there's, there's 360 feet from this point to this point. Our code has a, it, it looks for a minimum separation for curb cuts and driveways of 75 feet. I mean, that separation well exceeds the code requirements. So if the board would want to see, I mean, again, I, I don't think that's a major change, but if you would want to see a curb cut dedicated to the trade shops, I think that could probably be...
Yeah, I mean, as long as there's enough turning radius in there and, you know, ability to navigate it.
Maybe Doug could draw something on that.
Yeah, all right, I will. Okay.
Anything else, gentlemen? Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, it's public comments on resolutions. Does anybody have a comment on any resolution?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Rob Carpenter and I'm here to speak a little bit about the Gonzella issue. I, I thank you very much for taking...
This section, sorry, sir, this section is...
Public comments?
Yeah, on resolutions. So if you could just wait until public...
After the resolutions.
On all matters. Thank you.
Sorry.
No problem.
Resolutions?
Yes.
I'll move resolution.
Hold on, Judge. You want to speak on resolutions?
I, I do, just, just very briefly. I'm Adam Grossman, I'm the attorney for the applicant on resolution number three on the agenda tonight, resolution 202539 Gouda LLC. And I was just, wanted to ask the board if the board would adopt their resolution scheduling the public hearing.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, not seeing any hands. Gentlemen, let's do our resolutions.
I'll move resolution 202537, Long Island Cauliflower Association granting final site plan approval, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion carries.
I vote, I move resolution number 38, grants approval for the amended site plan of River Point Apartments.
Second.
You guys want the pillars or let it go? Any opinions?
No, what do you, what the Architectural Review Board, what did they say? They, they want them in place?
They approve them.
With the stanchions?
They, they approved the amendment.
They approved the amendment.
Oh, they approved the amendment, okay. All right, so, moved in second. Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Hi.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I move resolution number 2025039 Gouda LLC, resolution scheduling a public hearing for the site plan application entitled Gouda LLC, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Hi.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. What's the date of that public hearing?
June 5th.
I'm sorry?
June 5th.
June 5th, okay, very good.
Resolution number 2025040, Sandy Pond Links LLC clubhouse, trade shops, manager restaurant, residence, resolution to schedule a public hearing for the site plan.
Second. Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Hi.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries.
I'll move resolution number 41, classifying accident pursuit to sequer grants farm stand approval for henpecked husband.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Hi.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I'm just curious, is the henpecked husband here tonight? No. His wife didn't let him come.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to recuse myself for the last resolution.
I'll move resolution 2025...
Yeah, no problem. Give Mr. Zunicki a minute.
Excuse himself.
Okay, somebody want to move number 42?
I'll move resolution 20254247 Pelletrew LLC farm stand granting the farm stand approval. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Hi.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion carries. Somebody can yell for Kenny. Okay, at this point, public comments on all matters.
Sorry, sorry for earlier.
No problem at all.
I don't generally speak before planning boards, so I'm not familiar with the process. So my name is Rob Carpenter, I work for Long Island Farm Bureau representing the agricultural industry on Long Island. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you very much for all you do for Riverhead and I do understand that you are, you and the Town Board are very supportive of the agricultural industry. Riverhead Town happens to be the largest agricultural town in New, in Long Island with almost 15,000 acres in production and our, our farmers are proud residents of the town. We are continuing to lose our farmland to development pressures and from non-agricultural people that come in and buy our land and then redevelop it into other projects. I've been involved with this project, and I'm speaking about the Gonzella issue earlier. I've been in projects, involved in this project for quite a long time and I can tell you, this was not a very simple deal to do. This was very complex and I'd like to recognize the Zuma's family, the Gonzella family, the Peconic Land Trust, the Town of Riverhead and the Department of Agriculture and Markets and all of the effort that they took into taking what was going to be a commercial development and putting it back into and preserving farmland. This is something that rarely happens on Long Island and particularly in Riverhead. This deal took many, many years to get done and there were times that we thought it wasn't going to happen, only to be resurrected to actually let it happen. As a condition of this, the back nine acres were preserved with the scenic easement as, as you well know. But because of the complexity of this deal, this was not just a simple issue and a simple easement. And there's been, over the course of the last three or four years, many things that have been left out of the discussion that I feel have not been fairly presented in an all-knowing manner. What I would like to request of you and possibly of the Town Board, which would be a separate discussion, is to actually sit down with the players involved, including the land trust, the land trust attorney, the Gonzella family and any others who are involved in it, to present you the other side and both sides of the story so that you have a greater understanding of all of the facts of what happened and, and how the deal came to be. I, I think this is a, an incredible opportunity that the largest town of agriculture on Long Island has the ability to actually put land back into farming with a family that's been here for a number of generations, that was originally their farm many years ago, to put back into production. And I think that would be a win for the town and a win for the residents and a win for agriculture. So I'm here just to make that request of you to, to consider that possibility of meeting with the groups and learning more about this before you make your final decision. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, Robert, I agree with you, the Zuma's families and the Gonzella families are great families in our town. There is one other parcel that was commercial, Manor Lane and 25, and that's went back to farming.
Correct.
So it's something that we absolutely... So it's something that we absolutely support. I'm just not sure if there's a mechanism in the legal department right now.
Yeah.
But we are gonna transfer our thoughts to the legal department to give to the town board.
Okay.
And if there's a mechanism or a way, we'd be happy to listen to anybody that wants to speak.
That's all I'm asking and I would appreciate that and I know your town attorney do a great job and, you know, just, just wanna make sure that everything is presented fairly so whoever is gonna make the final decision has a better understanding of everything that went into it and everything that's now coming out of it as the deal that was put together gets unput together, so to speak. So it, it was complicated.
We definitely understand your position.
And I've been doing.
We agree.
And I've been doing easements and learning about easements for 40 years. This was complicated, so thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and thank you for all you do. Rob, just, we wanna help the farmer, I come from a farming family. I did my homework on this. I went all the way back to the sale from Gonzella to Zuma's. I know the entire piece and it is complicated, but the, the buyer bought it with the easement in place, with the covenant, the covenant in place. He was told that you cannot farm that. I mean, if we allow that and legally we can't, we would have to allow other properties, the 46 acres on Edwards Avenue, the 12 acres off of Manor Lane. What do you do with that? That's my question to the Farm Bureau. I mean, you know, like Danielle said, we can't even open up a can of worms. That's the thing. And I mean, it's, it's not that we want, wanna hurt any farmer, we don't. But it just, in this situation, I don't think it's a good idea to allow this when other properties in the town of Riverhead have the exact same situation. And this is one, maybe one point where we differ because I don't believe in doing my research that this is the same as all of the other pieces. So again, we can debate this and have a conversation offline, I don't wanna take up anybody's time, because I think that this needs to be more researched and more well-thought-out and a, and a greater understanding, because I've never in 40 years of doing this seen a deal like this.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify for the record that we are talking about a conservation easement, so I know there was some different words thrown around, but this is a conservation easement.
Correct, and this is, this is an easement that's held by the town and only the town.
That's correct.
So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Any other speakers? Okay.
I'll move the meetings, uh, meeting minutes of, of the board, April 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Greg, no seeker actions tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, staff, other business? You guys taking care of business down there?
All right.
Good, yeah. Uh, no correspondence. Our next meeting date is gonna be Thursday, May 15th at 3 o'clock right here. Hope to see you all there. Can we get a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.